Let me say it again. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen digitally. This is the convening of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission of Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020. We're going to rise and say the pledge for those of us that are here. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
-the states of America-
Of the United States of America-
Republic-
And to the republic for which it stands-
One nation-
One nation, under God-
Indivisible-
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Jim Harris is here.
Lucas Steele. Michael Gordon.
Here.
Doug Hardy.
Here.
Donald Bergen. Dan McGowan. Chad Nelson.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Is that it?
Susanna Ballard, can you unmute yourself, please?
Looking for Susanna Ballard.
I believe we're having technical difficulties. Susanna Ballard, can you wave?
Susanna Ballard, are you present? I can see you. Can you hear us?
No, I don't think she can hear us. What do I do in this case?
Maybe write her name on a piece of paper and hold it up. Right, Suzanne.
Okay, we're acknowledging that we have a visual on Susanna Ballard.
Okay, Susanna Ballard is here.
Are you present? Matthew Mitchell?
Here.
Sam Levine?
Here.
And I see Lucas Steele.
Hi.
Okay, so how many do we have present?
So we have-
Regular commissioners.
Regular commissioners, we have five.
Five.
Five regular commissioners and two alternates.
So we have two spots available for alternates. So alternate... Is Susanna online yet? Well, her name's there and she's got an unmute or a muted signal.
Sorry, guys, I don't know how to write backwards that fast. Maybe she'll see it.
Sam's saying, Suzanne, can you hear us?
He says he can't hear us, but it's backwards, so I don't know. I didn't think to write it in reverse. Maybe she'll see it.
She just messaged in that she was... She said, "Correct."
Okay, if she can't hear us, then it'd be difficult for her to participate. Okay, so the other two alternates. Mr. Levine?
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, if you two gentlemen would participate as alternates on the commission, I'd certainly appreciate that.
Of course.
Okay, so we've got Mr. Mitchell, Chad Nelson, Sam Levine, myself, Michael Gordon, Doug Hardy, and Luke Steele composing the board this morning. Let me start by saying that this is a public hearing and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding for public questions and input, of which we have emails pertaining to various items. I would ask that anyone that wishes to speak, keep all comments to less than five minutes and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today, and that includes commissioners, please. After public input is taken, I'll then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation discussion amongst our commissioners and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. I will get there. Okay. So we've done the roll call. Minutes of the last meeting, commissioners, now that we have a completed commission, are there any corrections, additions, deletions to the last meeting's minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the minutes from the last-
A second.
Luke Steele.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Steele, a second by Mr. Nelson. Any further discussion? It's going to have to be a roll call vote, Madam Secretary. And only unmute yourself when you're going to speak, please.
Jim Harris.
Aye.
Lucas Steele.
Aye.
Michael Gordon.
Aye.
Doug Hardy.
Unmute yourself first, Doug. There you go.
Chad Nelson.
Aye.
Matthew Mitchell.
Aye.
Sam Levine.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Correspondence and announcements, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you. I have nothing to present at this point, thank you.
No announcements. I've already read the little blurb about the hearing, so, Mr. Morris, let's do our first item. It is a request to zone for a zone change from GC Golf Course District to RE Residential Estates District for the portions of the following lots that were purchased from the golf course. 2301 Hogan Lane, tract 135F as in Frank, block 2, lot 1B Bravo. 504 Hagen Way, tract 134, block 6, lot 5 Alpha. 514 Hagen Way, tract 134, block 6, lot 6 Alpha. 1985 Palmer Drive, tract 135C as in Charlie, block 3, lot 2A as in Alpha. 1995 Palmer Drive, tract 135C as in Charlie, block 3, lot 3A Alpha. Mr. Morris, your presentation, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir. As you've mentioned, these are five lots that are asked to be rezoned from, a portion of them rezoned from golf course to RE residential estates. There are five lots scattered around the east, excuse me, the west side of the golf course, one down here at 2301 Hogan Lane, at the end of Hogan Lane, two next to each other on Palmer Drive, and then two next to each other on Hagen Way. The property owners recently purchased portions of the golf courses, of the golf course property that wasn't being used as the golf course, and they're asking now to rezone only those portions of that they purchased from the golf course to RE to match the residential zoning for each of the lots. The first example here at 2301 Hogan Lane, it's kind of, butts the property on two sides. The next two are on Palmer Drive, side by side. You'll see the green area is the existing golf course zoning, and then the, this kind of greenish color, pea colored, is the RE zoning. These two lots have come in to ask for the rezone. There are two side-by-side lots there, and then two more side-by-side lots on Hagen Way, just off Jones and Magrum. They have small pieces that they recently purchased from the golf course. In September of last year, 524 was rezoned, a portion of that was rezoned to RE. These two have butted one, the commission heard that item last year. And that concludes my presentation. Actually, I need to add one more thing, I'm sorry. The reason, part of the reason they're asking to rezone these two RE is so that they could use the, all the setbacks and allowances that are permitted uses that are allowed in the RE district. If they weren't rezoned to RE, they would only be limited to things that would be allowed on a golf course, which in this case could be things like landscaping, swimming pools, things like that, but not necessarily a building. Their building setbacks are based on their current RE zoning district boundaries, and when they're rezoned, their setbacks will be based on their new combined zoning where the, they would, the area that was rezoned, that was zoned golf course would go to zoned RE, and their building setbacks will be based on that new zoning district boundary. With that concludes presentation, thank you.
Okay, so, point of clarification. These are strips or parcels that have been combined already with the existing properties. So-
That is correct. They've purchased these properties from the golf course, they have gone through the lot alteration application process with the city to combine the golf course portion that they purchased, to combine that with the lot that they own that's currently zoned RE. So these are all one piece of property, but it's unusual in that they have two different zonings on one piece of property.
I understand.
In this case, they're trying to remedy that to make it all same as the RE zoning for each of these properties.
Basically, what this is, is a housekeeping issue to make the underlying zoning consistent with the existing parcel.
That's a good way to put that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, any questions by any commissioners?
Did we have any letters in on this one from the public?
Received no objections from anyone from the public.
And that was Mr. Nelson for the record.
That's correct.
Thank you, Luke.
Any other questions of the staff by the commissioners? Anybody else? All right, do we have an applicant here to present further this item?
Commissioners, this is Lee Johnson with APL Surveying. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Johnson by commissioners? All right, hearing none. I understand there have been no public testimony via email for this item?
Correct.
Okay, we're going to bring it back to the table for staff's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends that Planning Commission recommend approval of Land Use Action Number 20-2457 for a zone change from GC to RE for the portions of the following lots that were purchased from the golf course as shown on the attached parcel plat maps. 2301 Hogan Lane, tract 135F, block 2, lot 1B. 504 Hagen Way, tract 134, block 6, lot 5A. 514 Hagen Way, tract 134, block 6, lot 6A. 1985 Palmer Drive, tract 135C, block 3, lot 2A. And 1995 Palmer Drive, tract 135C, block 3, lot 3A. And just a reminder, this item is scheduled to be heard by the city council at their August 25th meeting, thank you.
Okay, are there any further discussion? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners.
I make a motion to approve ID Number 20-DASH-2457 Land Use Action with staff recommendations.
We have a motion by Mr. Nelson, do we have a second?
Second.
The second was by? Michael Gordon?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Steele, a second by Mr. Gordon. Any further discussion on the motion? Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Jim Harris?
Yes.
Lucas Steele?
Yeah.
Michael Gordon?
Yes.
Doug Hardy?
You gotta unmute yourself.
Chad Nelson?
Yes.
Matthew Mitchell?
Yeah.
Sam Levine?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion passes. All right, the next item on today's agenda is item number ID 20-DASH-2453, a request for a zone change for a portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 105-DASH-14-DASH-045, abutting Granada Vereda, I'm not sure that's spelled correctly nonetheless, from Golf Course District GC to Residential Estate District to create a new residential lot from the unused portion of the golf course property. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you. This is similar to the previous request, but a little more, a little different in that it's creating a brand-new lot. The golf course, portion of this golf course property is at the, at Granada Vereda, Vereda. It's a cul-de-sac off of Paseo Granada. It's near Jamaica Boulevard South, Paseo Dorado, and Via Naranja area. I'll zoom in a little bit on the next slide here. The subject property, again, is at the end of Granada Vereda cul-de-sac. They're proposing an almost 19,000 square foot lot be created out of the golf course property. The next slide shows the zoning, so the golf course property itself with the golf course is zoned golf course. They're proposing to rezone the area for this new lot to RE, same as the residential zoning in the area. So in order to build a home on that, that needs to be rezoned to RE, so they're proposing to rezone it to RE at this point to create a new residential lot, and then the, after, if, and when this is approved by the city council, then they would go through the lot alteration process to create a new lot on that property that coincides with the new RE zoning. In a little more background information, in 2016, the city adopted its current development code. Prior to that adoption, the golf course, all the golf course area was zoned RE, just like the adjacent residential lots. Concern was expressed at that time regarding the impending sale and possible redevelopment of the golf course. As a result, the golf course district was created, ensuring that the golf course would remain a golf course. So the fear was at that point, if someone were to come in and buy the golf course, they just, since it was all, the entire golf course was zoned RE, that someone could just come in and get rid of the entire golf course and just put new residential estate lots in there. So the city council said, "Let's just call, let's zone the golf course golf course, and if someone wants to come in and create lots, then they'll have to do that through this process that we're going through now." With that, the lot does meet all the requirements for an RE lot. There are also no objections from any departments or agencies. There were some comments that some utilities will need to be expanded, extended, and/or some easements dedicated. Those would happen during the lot alteration process to, when they create the new lot or the new lot dimensions. With that concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Okay, is there any questions of staff by commissioners?
My only question was about the utilities and-
That's Mr. Nelson.
What, can you give us more insight on that, Luke?
You know, they, the comments from the utilities department said that they would need to... Utility providers advised that the developer or parcel owner of newly created lots may be responsible for all costs associated with extending utilities. There's an, they're going to ask for an eight-foot utility easement along the front of the property like the rest of Granada Vereda has. And the engineering department commented that some blow-off present in the middle of the lot may need to be preserved, and there'll be a long reach of sewer lateral to make it to that property. So just the underground utilities and then the extension of a possible rededication of an easement along the front of the property for the other utilities, and all that would be handled through the lot alteration process when they create the new lot.
Standard operating procedure, it's up to the, the expense is borne by the developer.
That's correct.
Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, do we have an applicant present to further present?
Commissioners, Lee Johnson, APL Surveying again. I also have one of the owners of the golf course here with me. Luke did a good presentation on that. The utilities currently, I know that was a question that was asked, the utilities currently do come all the way up into the cul-de-sac, so water is right there in front of the lot. The sewer's in the cul-de-sac, it, there's just not a current lateral in this lot being connected in, so the developer would have to bear the cost of bringing over a new lateral to it. Other than that, we're here to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant by commissioners? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Johnson, appreciate your input. Was there any public input via email or anything like that?
No comments received, as I said.
Okay, so hearing none, we are at the table for Mr. Morris's conclusions.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends that Planning Commission recommend approval of Land Use Action 20-DASH-2453, rezoning the 18,911 square foot portion of APN 109-DASH-01-DASH-067 as described on the attached proposed lot map from GC to RE. And again, as a reminder, this item is scheduled to be heard by the city council at their August 25th meeting, thank you.
Any questions of staff? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners. Anybody?
I will make motion to approve based on staff's recommendation. This is Luke Steele.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Steele for ID 20-DASH-2453, do we have a second?
A second.
And we have a second by Mr. Nelson to approve ID 20-2453. Any further discussion by commissioners? Okay, we are at the table for a vote. Madam Secretary, roll call vote.
Jim Harris?
Yes.
Lucas Steele?
Yeah.
Michael Gordon?
Yes.
Doug Hardy? Chad Nelson?
Yes.
Yes.
Matthew Mitchell?
Yeah.
Sam Levine?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, congratulations to the applicant. The next item on today's hearing is ID Number 20-2452. It is a request for a rezone change for a portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 109-DASH-01-DASH-067, abutting Hogan Lane from GC Golf Course District to RE Residential Estates District to create a new residential lot from the unused portion of the golf course property. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, again, thank you. This is very similar to the previous request. The subject property in this case is located on Hogan Lane, which is off of Acoma Boulevard South to Wood Lane and into Hogan Lane, near the end of Hogan Lane. Here's a zoomed-in area map. The subject property is about 26,000 square feet. It's an irregular shaped, kind of five-sided shaped property here on Hogan Lane, and again in the unused area of the golf course. The current zoning for the golf course, of course, is GC Golf Course. Like the previous item, they're asking that this area for this proposed lot be rezoned to RE, and after it gets approval of rezoned, then they'll come in and split it off through the lot alteration process to create a new residential lot zoned RE. The proposed lot meets all the requirements for an RE property. Again, in 2016, the city adopted its current development code. Prior to that adoption, the entire golf course was zoned RE, residential estates, just like the rest of the residential properties in the area. Concern was expressed at that time regarding the impending sale and possible redevelopment of the golf course. As a result, the golf course district was created, ensuring the area, the golf course would remain a golf course, and someone couldn't come in and just split up the whole golf course into individual RE lots. They'd have to go through a process that we're going through now to rezone the property to an RE lot before they could split it off to an RE property. It meets all the requirements of the RE district. Utilities would need to be extended to the property, and that's all the comments staff has at this point, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of staff by the commissioners? Hearing none, I will ask, is there an applicant present to comment?
Commissioners, Lee Johnson with APL Surveying again. This parcel is very similar to the last one we went over, that, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, let's bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations. Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any comments from the public with regards to emails, Madam Secretary?
Yes, we've received four letters.
Okay, you're going to have to get closer to the microphone for us to pick-
Yes, we've received four emails to this, and I will read them into the record. Rick Reyes and Heidi Bertini. Steward mailing, good day to you. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to voice our concerns with the rezoning plan. We reside at this property for the past three years. We've enjoyed living in our home in this very special location and beautiful golf course community full of warm and cordial people. We were attracted to this lot mainly because of its unique location with unobstructed view of the golf course in front of our house and back. We knew that it was going to be the view that we will forever enjoy because it was zoned for golf course. We are opposing this rezoning due to the increase in traffic and narrow street and devaluation of our house with the obstruction of the view of the golf course. As we look forward to living at our current home for many years, we look forward to continue to enjoy the view as it is currently unobstructed views in the front and back, the unique location that we have and always wanted, and the main reason we got this lot, even if it cost us dearly. Most importantly, we are concerned that allowing rezoning can always lead to the future rezoning of golf course when favorable opportunity for the owners arises, which can affect, negatively impact, all of the golf course residents. Therefore, we strongly oppose to this rezoning. We just want to let you be aware that a couple weeks ago, I, Rick, had the opportunity to meet with the two owners as they requested me to meet with them. In our discussion, Jeff stated that he can do anything they want to do with the golf course because of, because they own it. He added that they have a good lawyer. This statement was not appropriate and intended to intimidate me. I understand that they are the owners, but I do believe that it is proper that they can do any, that it is proper that they can do any transformation that they want that entitles rezoning without the golf course homeowner's approval. We truly appreciate if you heartily consider our thoughts and concerns on this matter. This rezoning issue is very deeply concerning to us as it's set up for future uncertainties as to the changes that may happen with another rezoning. We strongly oppose to this rezoning. We hope you understand our situation and our concern. Thank you very much.
Before you go on, Mr. Morris, can you point out the location of that property?
What was that address? Did they give an address on that?
They did. I was not supposed to.
Right here, it's across the street from, across Hogan Lane from the proposed lot and just a little bit north, but it's across the street, it fronts on the golf course, and then it fronts on Hogan Lane, backs to the golf course and fronts on Hogan Lane.
All right, thank you.
This is from Michael and Anna Maria McCarty. With the undersigned residents impacted by the application for rezoning, right asking that you postpone the currently scheduled special meeting set for July 22nd, 2020 for the rezoning request for a zone change from golf course to residential estate. the rezoning request for zone change from Golf Course to Residential Estates District for a portion of APN 109-01-067 abutting Hogan Lane from Golf Course District to Residential District to create new residential lot from an unused portion of the golf course property. On July 10, 2020, Mr. Schmeling sent correspondence advising that due to the continued increase in COVID-19 cases, the Lake Habsburg City is taking the necessary steps to protect residents, city staff, and planning commission members to help slow the spread of COVID-19, and changing the above referenced July 22, 2020 special meeting to be conducted virtually with the ability to submit public comment via email. The affected residents and surrounding community appreciate the severity of the COVID-19 pandemic as well as the city's position and actions in protecting its residents, community, and staff. However, the affected residents are concerned that their views, opinions, and objections will not be clearly communicated without personal participation in said special meeting. In the planning commission's own agenda for the special meeting, it states that the public can participate by various means, all of which allow listening or viewing to the special meeting. The agenda further indicates that members of the public may submit written comments to the city clerk by email that may or may not be read during the meeting. This statement clearly demonstrates the affected residents' concerns that their comments, views, opinions, and/or objections will not be taken into account in this matter. Furthermore, this matter before the commission is not one of urgency. There is no prejudice to the golf course if the special meeting is postponed. On the other hand, if special meeting goes forward as planned, the affected residents and surrounding community will definitely be irreversible and permanently impacted and prejudiced if they cannot participate in the express their concerns, views, opinions, and/or objections. The affected residents have many concerns with the proposed rezoning of the above identified parcel, including but not limited to the effect of the value to their properties, loss of open space views, impact on emergency responses due to the additional homes being built in an already populous community, as well as other environmental concerns. The affected residents would like the opportunity to voice these concerns in the traditional in-person meeting. Because the issues involved are numerous and complex, the affected residents would also use the additional time to further evaluate the suggested rezoning and seek legal counsel or representation in this matter. Therefore, the affected residents are requesting postponement of the special meeting until such time as the current COVID-19 limitations are lifted and a special meeting can be held in person. In the alternative, the residents propose that the special meeting be held as scheduled on July 22, 2020 at 9:00 a.m., with participants abiding by the current state and local mandates such as holding the meeting outdoors, allowing for social distancing, and participants wearing facial coverings. Thank you for your consideration and attention to this request, and look forward to your response.
And do we have a location for that property owner?
Oh, I apologize. Homeowners in support of this request for postponement are Adrian Molina, Mike Wilson, James and Caitlin Lintern, Beck Bushnell, Gordon White, Bonnie Halverson, Rick Reyes, Heidi Bertin, Larry and Cheryl Yarborough, and Alan Walts.
So, that's a combined, that's a combined letter.
Correct. The main.
We have two more.
The main one, 2343 Hogan.
The person who wrote that email lives at this address, is 2343, right directly across from the proposed lot.
Okay, I have two more. So, this is from Diana Goodrich. There is a zoning law that allows parking in your neighbor's yard. When you live in a narrow street, you can park anywhere in your neighbor's front yard. It happened to my friend who lives on Sheik Drive. It is much wider than lower Hogan Lane. Since lower Hogan Lane, where the request for rezoning is located, is so narrow, the residents of this area will be at risk of having additional people using this ordinance to park in others' yards. Thank you. And last but not least, this is from...
Before we go further, the address of that one?
It did not state an address.
Okay. Please continue.
Okay. And this is from Anna Maria McCarty. Good day. My name is Anna Maria McCarty, and I am one of the homeowners of 2343 Hogan Lane. I appreciate the opportunity to express my concerns regarding rezoning ID 2452. I request my comment and request for postponement to be read and added to the special planning and zoning meeting for reasons specified. I also would like to ask that the items mentioned in the request for postponement be addressed, adding a residential lot to an already dense cul-de-sac, which currently is well beyond the 400 feet of the general street design standards, as well as the 36-foot road surface minimum. I understand that the city also has a limit as to how many homes are suggested for the cul-de-sac. I believe the city has these numbers in place because they deem this is for important fire and safety issue. The narrow street and the number of homes and the fact that there is only one entrance is a safety concern, not just of property, but also of lives. There are also other issues such as the general purpose of zoning laws, which are to guarantee to an investor that his or their value and development will not have to endure future attacks on the standards for which they invested along with, I believe, Prop 207. While the golf course needs to maintain their 36 holes, the reduction of the zoned GC land will negatively impact the RE and the open spaces on green zones, which make this golf course itself so unique. It was zoned this way for these reasons. When many brought property here, it was with the understanding that the neighborhood was clearly established within one of the first tracts in the city's history with the promise of low density and open space. I would also hope that anyone involved in the decision-making for this rezoning request would not have any interest in the golf course, including either directly or via business entities, or investors, or have any other associations. With my best and honest intentions. And that's it.
And that concludes the...
This concludes the public comments.
Okay, and that particular owner also resided at 2343, correct? All right, so, we've had our public input. We'll bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of land use action number 20-2452 rezoning the 26,290 square foot portion of APN 109-01-067 as described on the attached proposed lot map from GC to RE. And again, this item is scheduled to be heard by the City Council at their August 25th meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners. I'll start by saying that clearly we have some concerned community members there requesting postponement of this issue. What say you, commissioners? Discussion?
I think we could make a decision on this one without postponing it. I think that residents have done a great job at coming together and voicing their opinions.
So, you're saying that we could go ahead and postpone this and wait for more of a public hearing? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Nelson?
I'm saying I think that we could make a decision. Well, I don't know. I mean, I would, when it comes to that point, I'm ready to make a motion.
Is there any additional discussion on this item?
You know, I would just add that...
Mr. Still.
I guess I have a question. Do we have any legal, city legal advice on the letter that came in regarding whether that's a legal way to do this in the COVID era?
Ms. Gary? This is our city attorney. Try it now.
Good morning. Yes, so, we have taken every step that is possible for us to take to ensure that we have public access to the meeting today, and also that we are able to gather public testimony prior to the meeting. And keep in mind that this is one of two hearings, and so, there will be another hearing before the City Council, and hopefully by that point in time, we will have some in-person capabilities, but all of that's unknown at this time.
Any additional discussion? Mr. Still?
No, I would just pile on to what Kelly just said, and we're an advisory to the City Council, and this should be an in-person meeting by the time we get there, I hope, for a lot of reasons. But I think I'm ready to make a decision on this, the planning and zoning level.
We're at the table for discussion and/or a motion.
I make a motion to not approve this item, and therefore, a yes vote would be to not approve this item.
Are you including a postponement or anything with that motion?
No.
Mr. Chair, this is a recommendation to the City Council, so it's not a motion to approve or to disapprove, but it's a motion not to recommend or to recommend.
So, Mr. Nelson needs to revise his motion to either approve or disapprove?
If he could, that would be great.
Did you hear that, Mr. Nelson?
I make a motion to disapprove this item, and therefore, a yes vote would mean to disapprove this land use action.
Do we have a second?
I second, Matthew Mitchell.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nelson and a second by Mr. Mitchell, to disapprove item number ID 20-2452. We are at the table for discussion. Let me start by saying that while the previous item where we created a lot basically had no impact on adjacent properties or neighboring properties, I can see where this one here could possibly have an impact. And I understand those people bought in good faith that this was going to remain golf course and open. I'm not sure I'm in step with recommending approval on this. So, we're still at discussion. That was my point. Any additional discussion?
I will just say that I'm gonna vote no on this. I think it's better at a City Council level to decide something that's contentious, so I'm going to vote no on the current motion.
Good point. Any additional discussion? All right, let's bring it to the table for a vote.
Okay, and just to clarify, a yea vote will be to recommend disapproval to the City Council. So, a yea vote means recommend disapproval. Jim Harris?
All right, I'm going to fall in line with Mr. Still and put it on the shoulders of City Council, so I'm gonna say no.
So, you're not approving the disapproval?
That is correct.
So, you're wanting for this to go forward to council?
My vote?
Well, you're voting for this to be approved at City Council level?
I am voting no on the motion to disapprove.
You understand? Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. So, Ms. Lucas Steele?
No.
Michael Gordon?
Yes.
Doug Hardy? Chad Nelson?
Yes.
Matthew Mitchell?
Yeah.
Sam Levine? Motion passes to recommend disapproval to the Council, five to two.
Okay. Next item on today's agenda is ID 20-2454. It is a request for a planned development rezon of 2430 Trade Wind Drive, tract 2293, block five, lot 11, from R3 Limited Multiple Family Residential District to R3 PD Limited Multiple Family Residential Planned Development District for a height exception from the maximum building height of 15 feet to allow a single-family residence with a height of up to 20 feet. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. The subject property is located on Trade Wind Drive at the corner of McCulloch Boulevard, North McCulloch, just uphill from Akoma Boulevard. I'll zoom in a little bit on this property. Again, it has a side of the property is on McCulloch Boulevard. It fronts on Trade Wind Drive at that corner, and it's Inlet Drive, and the City Police Department is just at this corner of Inlet Drive in McCulloch, about half a block from the subject property. This is a topographic map of the property. On Trade Wind Drive, it slopes down about six feet from front to back, from Trade Wind Drive to the back of the property, and slopes about, then about, again, six feet down McCulloch Boulevard from Trade Wind Drive to the back of the property. The subject property here is zoned R3, and then the surrounding areas on Trade Wind Drive and Inlet are zoned R3. Across McCulloch Boulevard, there's an RM Multiple Family. R3 is a multiple-family zoning also. R3 allows a maximum building height of 15 feet. The applicant is asking to go taller than 15 feet because of, he wants to have an RV garage that's tall enough to, he feels, serve his needs. So, a possible way to get height above 15 feet is to go through the planned development process. The planned development process is a mechanism by which someone can apply for an exception to the underlying development code. In this case, the applicant is asking for the exception to go 20 feet, the possibility of 20 feet tall instead of 15 feet tall for his project or his single-family home. Here's a general site plan of the area. McCulloch Boulevard is at the top, Trade Wind Drive down on the right-hand side. It's a three-bedroom home with RV garage and a two-car garage attached covered patio. It meets all the setback requirements for the R3 zoning district. Here's more of a development plan. A development plan is typically required as part of a planned development application because typically the development plan is what gets approved as part of the exceptions for the underlying district. In this case, the development plan shows the home outlined in blue, and also, they propose a roof platform with a view deck with a hot tub below, an outdoor kitchen area, also landscaping trees, shrubs, block wall around the back and side of the property. The building elevations are shown here, facing Trade Wind Drive, which would be the front of the property. You see, it's a stucco home with some stone laminate, stone laminate, can't see that, laminate features, and of course, tile roof. The RV garage is on the side facing McCulloch Boulevard. The height that they're proposing, shown on this plan, is 18, about 18 and a half feet from the grade of the property or the home. We're gonna do a little discussion here about max grade or how heights are determined in Havasu. So, in this zoning district, the maximum building height is 15 feet. And so, that kind of begs the question, where's that 15 feet measured from? Where's the zero for measuring that 15 feet in height? In a lot such as this, that slopes down from the street, the zero is one foot above the pavement on Trade Wind Drive. So, this line indicates the grade of Trade Wind Drive, Trade Wind Street Drive, and so, one foot up from that is where the zero is for measuring the height. We call that a 101. That's the 101. It's an assumed elevation of one foot above the high point of the street. So, we can go, that zoning district allows 15 feet above the 101, above the zero. So, it's possible to get a house that's taller than 15 feet. You'll see them all over town in the R1 or in the R3 district. But what happens is people dig down, so they go taller overall. So, the zero, in this case, is this line, which we call the 101. Property owner could dig down, in this case, three and a half feet to the bottom of the slab of the home, and then they can go, that three and a half feet they dug down plus 15 feet that they're allowed for 18 and a half foot home. So, that's, and that's not uncommon in Havasu in the R1 and the R2 and the R3 zoning districts, which are limited to 15 feet. So, in this case, the applicant is asking for a 20-foot height from what's allowed at the zero. So, again, here's a situation, what they're asking for. If it's approved as requested, they can go up to 20 feet. go up to 20 feet from the 101, which again is one foot above the high point of the street on Trade Wind. So, I'll flip between these so you can kind of see, so, we can see there's what's allowed and could be done possibly, and here's what they're asking, that they be allowed to go up to 20 feet from the zero or the 101. With that concludes staff's presentation. Open any comments. Thank you.
Okay, so, we're here for discussion. So, basically, Mr. Morris, what you're saying is they're asking to not have to dig down and to go with what the existing 101 is and get 20 feet above that?
That's correct.
Okay, in an R3, formerly R3 district?
That's correct.
Okay. Would you go back to, and pardon me because I'm opening up the discussion first, would you go back to the satellite image of the adjacent lots? All right, I believe, and it's probably not on this. We've got our, our these, R3 properties that go up McCulloch. There's a two-story apartment complex. I believe it's right there. The white, keep going up, 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 up. I believe it's that white roof there. It's already two-story, and that is over 20 feet in that district.
What happens many times is it's misleading to look at it and see, because it will physically be taller than 20 feet, but the question is, how is that 20 feet arrived at? The 15 feet's typically the maximum building height. If it's built now, it would be, again, determined where the zero is, and once that zero is determined, people can dig down to go taller. Some properties that were developed prior to the city code, zoning code, could have been something that was done grandfathered in at taller than 15 feet, but if, by today's standards, by our regulations, they would have to meet that 15-foot requirement. On a downward sloping lot, it's pretty easy to determine where the zero is, one foot above the high point of the street. It gets more complicated with upward sloping lots, which we're not dealing with in this case. This is a downward sloping lot, so we don't have to get into how convoluted that can be. But, in this case, if you, you may see buildings in Havasu in areas that are zoned for maximum of 15 feet in height, and they will appear to exceed the 15 feet, but because of the way that the grade can be lowered, they don't exceed the 15 feet unless they're very old buildings that may have been built before the current zoning regulations.
And I understand that. Most of the RV garages that are built in town on single-family R1 lots are dug down, thus typically on a downward sloping lot, and usually create drainage issues, and I'm sure that's what this customer is trying to avoid. So, all right, I made my point. Any further discussion by, or questions of staff on the presentation from commissioners? Anybody?
Luke?
Mr. Nelson?
My question is, and I guess a concern, I completely understand what, what this person is trying to do, and, you know, it's an issue with our height restriction in a lot of, on a lot of lots, but are you concerned about opening up Pandora's Box here?
Well, thank you for the question. Typically, planned development rezone is very case-specific. It's going to be depend upon the situation. I would, I would, personally, I don't think it, if this is the best way to go about this. I mean, from a planning standpoint, it would be simpler just to, people would meet the requirements of the underlying zoning district. Again, but if, if we get requests for these, we will take them and we'll take them to the commission and we'll make a recommendation, and then, then it would be up to the commission to make a recommendation on the city council, and the city council to ultimately decide. But typically, we would like to see them meet the underlying zoning height, especially the height requirements from staff level.
Any additional questions of staff? Okay. Is the applicant present? Mr. Atwell, would you like to make a presentation?
Uh, this is Mr. Atwell. I, I did submit an email. You don't have to read the whole email that I submitted. It was more of your reading to see why I'm pursuing this planned development overlay. What I looked, looked at this presentation is the two biggest concerns of dealing with this development is, does it affect the neighbors in a negative way? And does this planned development fit into the neighborhood or affect the city's services in a negative way? During the onsite citizens review board that we held, the only concern was my uphill neighbor, Mr. Leiser, and what he expressed to me is he didn't want a multi-story, multi-family unit next door. Well, that is not our plan, and we talked extensively with Mr. Morris on how it would affect the city or not affect the city, and one thing I'd like to turn out or point out about opening the Pandora's Box is R1 and R2 lots are not available to have a planned development overlay being 15 feet because of the surrounding limitations, but this is something that is available to an R3 according to the zoning codes. So, all of this development fits nicely within a planned development overlay. If you stood on the property, and like you pointed out, Mr. Harris, north, multi-story, multi-family unit, that whether they were grandfathered in or not, still exists taller than what my development's going to be. To the east, we have multi-family units, and if you go further up Trade Wind, like you described, there are multiple R1 lots with RV garages, and again, those all were lucky enough to have a elevated property that they could dig down and do what they wanted. I do not. Going to the south, obviously, we have a very large city complex, multi-story greater than 20 feet. Even if mine is at 20 feet, it would still be below what the city complex is just to the south. And then, if you look to the west, you have the RM district, which is allowed multi-story up to 30 feet, and then behind that, you have sing, single-family homes elevated five feet or more above McCulloch Boulevard, and you have a single-family home with an RV garage that's back behind a wall, but again, visible from McCulloch and this property. So, do we think this fits into a diverse neighborhood that we, that I've described? Yes, we do, and thank you.
All right, any questions of the applicant by commissioners? Anybody at all?
I have a question of the applicant.
Mr. Nelson?
Good morning. My question is, and I guess Luke could help answer this as well, but in a planned develop, typically if there's any additional structures, wouldn't the applicant have to go through the planning process again? For example, if he wanted to build a casita or extend the length of his RV garage?
Yes, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Still?
Mr. Nelson?
Oh, Mr. Nelson, sorry. Mr. Nelson, Chairman? Yeah, a, a planned development typically is reviewed in conjunction with a development plan. I have the development plan showed on my screen right now, and the, the request for this is based, is, excuse me, is conditioned on approval of the request per the development plan of the property. So, any sort of, when the property's developed, he would have to build the structure pretty much exactly like it's, it's laid out on the development plan. We discussed this with the applicant. If he's making any major changes to this proposed development plan, then it would have to go back, typically have to go back to the planning commission and city council to amend that planned development. So, any, any major changes here would go back through this process because it was part of a planned development rezone. So, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the applicant's aware of that in case, if there's anything that he wanted to add to his planned development, that he had the opportunity to do that with you, number one, and that he understands that, you know, this would have, have to be disclosed if he sold the property, that if someone wanted to add a casita or an RV garage, or I didn't, I didn't see, would he have to go through a process if someone wanted to add a pool?
It would depend upon whether we, staff considered that enough of a major change to the development plan. There are all kinds of what-ifs. My understanding is the applicant is not proposing or planning to do a swimming pool. Of course, confirm that with him. This is what he's proposing for, in his term, in his eyes, the life of him having his property, is my understanding.
Mr. Nelson brings up a good point, that this particular action is running with the land, and that any future sale of the property would have to be disclosed, that it's not the, a regular R3 zoning.
That's correct. We, well, we did mention that to the applicant also.
Good point, Mr. Nelson. Any additional questions of the applicant?
I have another question.
Mr. Nelson?
And, and i- if, from the max grade, is the structure 18 feet or is it 20 feet?
Well, as, as proposed, as he's asking for this request, he's asking to go up to 20 feet. He indicated that he just wanted some wiggle room. He's planning for about 18 and a half, but he's, wants some wiggle room just in case it comes in a little taller. So, he went with 20 feet as a safety measure, if you will, and that would be, the potential would be 20 feet from the 101. He could dig down a little bit and make it 18, 19 feet from the 101, but my understanding is he wants to level the, the lot out at the 101 to go up 20, uh, uh, up to 20 feet from there, but we can confirm that with him, which would be...
Is there, is there an overlay district that would be better instead of locking him into a planned development, like South Gate, 18 feet? I know that's not what he's looking for, but is there an overlay that is better than locking in, him into a planned development?
Not that can be used on this property.
Well, we did discuss a number, discuss a number of options with the applicant on this. The first one is digging down, no change. Next one, he previously had come forward with an attempt to rezone it to RM, this is an adjacent lot, which would allow up to 30 feet. At his neighborhood meeting, there was some pushback on that, so he revised the plan to go with his planned development. Another option would be to amend the city code to allow taller buildings. Other option would be other rezones to other zoning districts, which don't really fit this area and allow taller heights, and to alleviate, help alleviate the concerns of the neighborhood, he's presented not going up to, some districts allow 30 feet. Rather than rezoning to a district that allows 30 feet, he chose to say, if you can come in and limit it to 20 feet, which is five feet taller than what's normally allowed, just to kind of balance out the, his, his need for a taller RV garage, and when the concerns in the neighborhood about really tall buildings next to them. So...
And they didn't want, the, the neighbors were also concerned about, well, they were, the current zoning on this is what?
Current zoning is R3, and he's asking for an R3 with a planned development to allow up to 20 feet in height instead of 15 feet.
I guess this would be a question for Kelly, you know, can we, could we rezone this to RM and limit the heights to 20 feet?
Why would we do that?
I mean, we, that's not something that we could consider today. One, the request isn't to rezone it to RM, and then we would have to go through a complete change of the RM district to be able to get it to the 20 feet, and that would have to be done first, which is a significant process.
And that goes through the general plan, doesn't it?
I...
Well, if, if he were to try to rezone it RM and limit it to 20 feet in height, it'd be a planned development again. He'd have to go through the PD development to limit the height.
Okay.
So, it'd be similar to this, but it, we'd have to, this doesn't change the base zone of R3. It just changes the, the height that he's allowed on this particular project to 20 feet. All the other development standards for R3 would remain. If we went to RM, that would, there's different development standards for RM compared to R3, so that would be maybe even more of an effect, potential effect on the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions of the applicant by commissioners? Okay. Has there been any public commentary on this via email?
No, no comments were received for this item.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the table for staff's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you. Staff analysis of the proposed site plan indicates the proposed building can be constructed by simply manipulating the grade of the property. There's no need to rezone the property in order to accommodate the requested building height. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the planning commission recommend denial of land use action 20-2454 for a planned development rezone of 2430 Trade Wind Drive, tract 2293, block five, lot 11, from R3 to R3 PD for a height exception from the maximum building height of 15 feet to allow a single-family residence within a, with a height of up to 20 feet, as shown on the attached development plan. And as a reminder, this item is scheduled to be heard by the city council at their September 8th meeting at the request of the applicant, so he wasn't available for the typical meeting on, on the 25th of August, so he's asked that we go on to the city council on September 8th. Thank you.
Okay, we are back at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners. I am going to take the opportunity to start. I think it's going to be no surprise to anybody that I have absolutely no problem with this recommendation, with this application. We do have adjacent proper, or, excuse, excuse me, properties in the vicinity that are two-story, and I don't believe that this is going to be a detriment to the, to the area, and I don't have a problem with approving this. My opinion. So, I believe the properties across the street and just down the street a little bit, across the street, are a different zoning district, and those are two-story. So, I wouldn't see a problem with a single-story RV garage that had the ability to go up to 20 feet from a base 101 off of Trade Wind. Any other comments by commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gordon?
I, I agree with you. Did I hear that right? Did staff recommend denial or did staff recommend approval?
Staff recommended denial of this application.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
What were, what was your comment?
Oh, I'm with you. I don't, I don't, personally don't see a problem with, with doing this in this particular case, so I guess I might have missed why, why the recommendation for denial was.
Staff's just going off the fact that it's against his current zoning.
Got it. Thank you.
But through the PD, as I indicated, I, I don't, I don't see a problem with this. Other, other comments, commissioners? We are at the table for comments and/or a motion. Anybody? Mr. Gordon? Well, Mr. Gordon's comments did not come through. They were kind of garbled. Want to try again?
Let me try that, let me try that again. I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Gordon makes a motion to approve item number ID 202454. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Mr. Levine to approve ID 202454. Any additional discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
My, my only, I, I, uh, this is a tough one, because I agree with you 100%. I don't see any detriment to this neighborhood or this particular case. And I, I, I also understand Luke's position to deny it because there could be a line going out the door for, you know, these, these heights changes if we pass this. So, what are your thoughts on, on that?
Well, my thinking is it's, it's a planned development. It's restricted to the, the application of what they're going to do. Anything that they want to change down the road has to come back before this commission, and then back again to the city council. So, it's, it's a restrictive use, and he's not going outside of the parameters of the adjacent properties, if you will, so I just, I don't have a problem with using this vehicle to, to do that.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gordon.
I'll add to that. Yeah, sure, we might get some more applications to do something similar, but this is an expensive and timely process, so unless an app feels like they have support in the neighborhood, I, I don't see a whole wave of the roll commission.
Yeah, I just want to get your guys' feedback, that's all.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion now. We do have a motion to approve this item. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, would you please call, roll call vote?
Jim Harris.
Yes.
Lucas Steele.
Yes.
Michael Gordon.
Yes.
Doug Hardy.
Yes.
Chad Nelson.
Yes.
Matthew Mitchell.
Yes.
Sam Levine.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, congratulations to the applicant. Good luck. All right. The last item today is ID number two zero two four five five. This is a request for a planned development rezone of Track twenty-three forty-five, Block one, Lot one, from C dash C H D, which is Commercial Health District, to C dash C H D slash P D, Commercial Health District Planned Development. Approving a general development plan allowing use exception for light industrial manufacturing at the previous Kmart location. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. The subject property is the old Kmart property, Kmart building and property located on McCullough Boulevard, just north of Swanson and bounded on the east by Riviera Boulevard and Capri to the west. The subject property is part of the entire Kmart shopping center. It includes the Kmart building itself and a number of parking spaces in area in the, behind the building and in the main parking area, as shown on the subject property map. This property measures, subject property measures about six acres. The building itself is just over a hundred thousand square feet. It has two hundred and fifty-two parking spaces on the property, about ninety of which are behind the property and the remaining in front. The rest of the shopping center itself has a total of two hundred and sixty parking spaces. The zoning for the property is currently Commercial Health District, as shown here, as our same zoning as the abutting properties and those across McCullough Boulevard are zoned Commercial Health District. To the south, across Swanson, is residential, excuse me, is the residential portion of the commercial district, Commercial Health District, has home to a number of condominium projects and some vacant lots. Here's a, a general site plan of the property. Again, this light blue color is the boundary of the, the lot that they're asking for the PD to go to, and then this is the outline of the existing Kmart building, showing some parking in the rear. Understanding is all activities associated with this production will take place inside, that's including storage or materials, any materials used or any storage of, of the product is all going to be inside. They anticipate as far as traffic as from deliveries and shipments, about two semi-trucks per week, and then daily FedEx and UPS deliveries and pickups. They're proposing that the employees for the property, for the business park in the rear away from the main parking lot, with some limited parking along McCullough Boulevard for some employees, just to give an impression of the space not totally unused. They're also saying that the, should be no noise heard from outside the building. It's a low noise sort of production, and there should be no disturbances by noise from the, from the areas, to the areas surrounding the property. With that concludes staff's presentation. I know the applicant and/or the representative are also here to make a presentation. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of staff about their presentation by commissioners? Anybody? Okay, is the applicant present?
Thank you, Chairman Harris. This is James Gray, the Director for the Partnership for Economic Development. We are here to talk about eighteen seventy McCullough Boulevard North, formerly known as the Kmart store. We are proposing, as said before, a zoning change from the Commercial Health District to a Commercial Health District Planned Development. I wanted to take a brief amount of time to talk about retail in rural communities. I wanted to address the areas of concern from our applicant public meeting, and then I wanted to talk about the job creation. We will follow up that with Rich Heine, the current owner of the facility for the last seventeen years, and then we will hear from premier manufacturing owner Ryan Busnardo for his vision for the Arizona expansion, and then show you a quick video of their operation in Corona, California. So let's get started. I just want to talk a little bit about retail. Sixteen months ago, I was here presenting on behalf of the shops at Lake Havasu. I said then, when the shops were created in two thousand and eight, Walmart was the largest retailer in the world. It didn't take but a decade later for Amazon to become the largest retailer. And if you look at these numbers right here, for fiscal year nineteen going into twenty, bricks and mortar retail is down fourteen percent, while online retail has exploded plus eighteen percent. Now, COVID nineteen has only sped up this retail revolution faster, and one thing that we're experiencing, but the entire nation is experiencing, large box retailers are being hurt the most. You can imagine the overhead to run a hundred thousand square foot retail space where you're going up against sunscreen, groceries, dresses, all the same products that they can buy online for a lot cheaper price. Currently in Lake Havasu City, we have over three hundred thousand square foot of vacant retail. Now, this only counts spaces that are of ten thousand square feet or higher. If we were to add all retail spaces smaller than ten thousand square feet, that number would go up substantially. One of the things is this retail of large spaces, as last year Sears and Kmart went down, it's been announced this year that JCPenney's is closing two hundred and forty-two stores in two thousand and twenty. We hope that our JCPenney's hangs in there, but again, this is a transition in the market space on how people buy products online that were normally sold, sold in these large spaces. Now, on the other hand, let's compare that to what is available in light industrial today in Lake Havasu City. There are currently five facilities zoned for light industrial for lease or for sale, and their total comes up to fifty thousand square feet combined. So the largest facility currently right now available is about fifteen thousand square feet. So the, from our perspective of economic development, what are we going to do with these large centers? Are we going to leave them vacant, or are we going to turn them into employment centers? And how can we do that in a responsible way? So let's go to the areas of concern. On the public applicant meeting held June twenty-second, we heard concerns from the neighbors, the businesses around there, that these are essentially all the concerns that were boiled down. One, is this a noisy industry? How much deliveries are going to take place? What are the hours of operation? And then essentially, how does parking work, and will that hurt my business? So let's go to noise. We are referring to this project as being noise neutral. As Luke said, one hundred percent of all operations are contained indoors. The use of, this is advanced smart manufacturing, to let you know how low impact this is. The applicant, PMG, will not even be changing out any electrical power needs to run the laser cutters, and so everything is self-contained inside, just as his sixty thousand square foot facility is in Corona, California. One other thing about noise that we discussed with, with neighbors, if you think about from a general noise pollution of retail spaces, a hundred thousand square feet, you have to think about how that space is utilized. And so those spaces are utilized in segments of anywhere from ten minutes to forty-five minutes, from buying sunscreen to a gallon of milk to batteries, TV, sporting goods. So that takes thousands of people coming in and out of that space daily in cars. That creates noise. What we're proposing here is having in year one eighty employees, in year two, a hundred and ten, and as this grows, you're seeing systematic cars coming in and out at time places, and it will be a lot less noisy for, for the residents in that capacity. Deliveries, the same way. Talking to the former Kmart manager and understanding the delivery schedule that it took to fill everything from toys, electronics, cosmetics, food, milk, the delivery schedule is quite rapid, as you can imagine. It takes a lot of inventory to fill that space. I think that staff did a good idea to semi-trucks, and then just general UPS, FedEx, and is what is expected in the space. And so again, we find that the delivery be less cumbersome for neighbors. Let's go to the next one. We had a lot of conversations about hours of operation, and just like many of the large retail spaces on McCullough, whether it's Safeway, Albertson's, Smith's, all these facilities run in a twenty-four hour capacity, whether it's cleaning, baking, stocking, management, these things are running twenty-four hours a day for maintenance and for keeping spaces up for, and in fact, this Kmart used to be open twenty-four hours a day in the month of December for the holidays. So PMG Manufacturing is very similar in that. They will have about eight to twelve employees working the night shift as they do in Corona, California. This is running the ENIS laser cutters. That takes an incredible amount of scheduled maintenance to clean all the lasers, to clean all the offboarding stuff, maintenance, cleaning crews, all kinds of things that it takes to run a facility like that. But again, just like all these other facilities, it will be scarcely heard in, in the space and will be very much in line with what was currently happening with the current Kmart operation. And finally, in areas of concern, PMG has put together a parking plan, as staff spoke about. After talking with all the businesses, you can see that Lot one currently has two hundred and fifty-two spots. He has created a desire to put all the employee parking in the rear, and then at that point, he would start creating a parking plan along, putting all his employees along McCullough. One of the reasons, the owner of PMG understands retail and activity and having more cars there in a, in a defined space definitely shows action in the center. So after meeting with the businesses there, they agreed that under this use of the building, that they would actually realize more parking than they've had before, and so that was a plus. And finally, I will move to why we are so excited about this, and that is net new Arizona jobs. Currently, our unemployment is at thirteen point eight percent. In the first twelve months, the owner of PMG is looking to invest three point five million dollars in PI facility employment improvement, machinery, furniture fixings, but more importantly, he's going to be adding sixty to eighty people in his payroll. He pays well over the median average income of Lake Havasu, therefore, he will be qualifying on an Arizona perspective for the Quality Jobs Program, but more importantly, his large investment into the facility in advanced smart manufacturing will be one of the first facilities that will garner state qualified facility programs for running high-tech jobs. And so we're very excited about that scenario. So with that, I would like to introduce Rich Heine, along with his partner David Long. They have owned this center for the last seventeen years, and have him talk about his experience in attracting retail with Jones Lang LaSalle, and then also their PMG facility tour in Corona, California.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen and the Planning Commission. My name is Rich Heine, and along with David Long, as James indicated, we have owned the Kmart centers since, I think nineteen, sorry, two thousand and three, so we've been in it for seventeen years. I, I had a presence in Lake Havasu for, since nineteen eighty-four. Originally bought a home on Holly, I lived in the Isles, I built a home on Eagle Lake. My daughter continues to live in Lake Havasu City, and my grandchildren go to a school there. So for that reason, I have a real interest in, in Havasu and our particular property being successful there, and hopefully bringing great jobs to the, the city of Havasu. I think James discussed the job situation, and PMG Manufacturing is not going to be bringing jobs to California to Havasu, but indeed going to be training people in the Havasu area, and he'll discuss that further. Need to talk to you a little bit about what we have gone through. We have realized some years, there was a lot of problems with Sears Holding and the Kmart facility in terms of its ability to survive with all the internet marketing that's going on, and Eddie Lecker, who, who was chairman of Sears Holdings, is really not invested in that. When we bought the property seventeen years ago, the Kmart building was the number one producing Kmart west of the Mississippi. It's continued to go downhill, and we've struggled with what the alternative happened to be. We elected to, when we heard that they were going to close the Kmart building in February, we decided to go out, get aggressive in terms of trying to find a new tenant, retail tenants for this particular property, and in that process, we hired Jones Lang LaSalle, a premier nationwide brokerage firm to help with the net search. I personally got on the phone, as well as Jones Lang LaSalle, attempted to locate tenants. Some of the people that we contacted, but not all, included Ross, Ulta, Ashley Furniture, which is a presence that, at the north end of Havasu, had an interest, but they only wanted eighteen thousand square feet. In an effort to try to make the In an effort to try to make the building a little bit more attractive, we hired a design firm out of uh Phoenix to. Put the building up into three different areas, which is what the old uh Walmart location occurred uh did. In order to make it more attractive, still eighteen thousand feet from Ashley into a thirty-three thousand piece really wasn't going to be sufficient. We've also talked to Target, At Home, Floor and Decor, Brown Burlington, Best Buy, Kohl. EOS Fitness, uh Harbor Freight Tools, Cal Ranch, American Freight Furniture, Pet Smart. Uh Martin Final, Aldi, Trader Joe's, J Mac and some others. I did get a call from uh the U-Haul operation in Phoenix wanting to buy the entire building for the trucking operation in that. We just started that quickly, that was not something that we wanted, we knew the city was not interested in it as well. So what was the main problem with the uh all of these people rejecting these retail opportunities? The main problem, guys, was we need a two hundred and fifty uh population. Scenario in the general area and that would of course include Kingman and uh Parker as well, we just don't have that. And so that was the main problem we ran into trying to find another retail tenant for this. As James indicated, my partner David Long and I went to. PMG manufacturing operation in Corona, California, because we wanted to make sure that these guys came to Havasu. So we were going to be happy with them as as the owner of the property, if we had an acceptable tenant in there. So we want to make sure that this operation met our needs, both without the city's needs. And so let me read you a letter that I kind of put together based on that uh meeting. That we had with Ryan Busnardo at PMG Manufacturing in Corona. On June fourth, twenty twenty, David Long and I, who are seventeen-year owners of Kmart Center in Lake Havasu City, Arizona. Visited the current manufacturing location of Premier Manufacturing, Inc. in Corona, California. As we toured this complete facility from the offices, the engineering areas to the manufacturing and shipping floor. We were impressed with the high level of activity, the friendly smiles and the eyes we received as we walked around. The facility was very busy, however, it was clean and well organized. We know no knock to fumes, excessive noise during our tour. And the intricate operation of CNC machines was impressive. There was power, there was a powder coating area with a heated drying room, which was clean, well lighted, and again with no knock to fumes. We are excited for the possibility of this manufacturing operation coming to our Kmart building. And that will again provide jobs to the community, which lost when Sears Holding closed the Kmart retail operation. And we realized finding another big box retailer was going to be near impossible. The operation with as many well-paid employees will also provide boost to the city of Lake Havasu. As well as business and sales opportunities to other tenants in our center. My partner David and Long and I are excited about PMG manufacturing coming to the Kmart building. Thank you.
And with that, I would like to introduce uh the owner of PMG Manufacturing to hit uh. Uh an idea of his vision for the Arizona expansion and then play a little video uh Ryan Busnardo.
Good evening, or good morning, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, can you hear me okay?
We've got you.
Okay, very good. Um hi, I'm Ryan Busnardo, I'm the president and CEO of Premier Manufacturing, also known as PMG Companies. Uh I've been coming to Lake Havasu for thirty years now and it's been a big part of uh my life and my family's. Real excited uh to finally make this a full-time, my full-time residence and be a part of this community full-time. You know, before um um I go through this, I really want to uh extend a special thanks to the uh. Planning and zoning staff for their due diligence on the report, uh the positive recommendation. I really want to thank uh Rich Heine and David Long for sharing our vision uh for this facility and all the time and hard work that they've spent. And uh I I I have to thank James uh Gray and Amy Spitzer on all of the uh all the hard work they've done. Over there uh the partnership for economic development. Um and and once again, I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for the opportunity and and listening to this today um. Who makes this possible for me to make this investment in the town, though, is uh the PMG team. The PMG team, my partners, members, employees, and the hopefully growing team that will be able to expand here um in Lake Havasu. I'm super excited about the opportunity to create these two hundred fifty uh highly technical skilled jobs here. And uh I really look forward to making this our corporate headquarters and a five-star American manufacturing facility. Uh with that, I I uh know James has a video to show here to answer any questions anybody may have. Thank you.
Well, and with that, uh that that concludes our presentation. Sorry, we didn't have a sound in that. But it it has awful reverb when it goes through uh the Zoom process. Um so at this point, um if we have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Does any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
I have, I have one.
Mister Nelson.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Chairman. I have one Mister, I have one major question, why? You know, if the applicant is not purchasing the property. And Mister, you know, Heine still owns the property, why are we not doing a conditional use permit and permanently rezoning? This building, the, you know, like James said, markets shift. And while this is the hot, hot market for this product today, in ten years, it may not be and. Um if that market shifts. And this this tenant leaves that building, we are stuck with a manufacturing building that. Is open to an applicant who is not quiet or um is not limited to. You know, uh limited shipping and is not limited to outdoor storage. We're not limiting any of that stuff. Um so I'm just wondering why. Staff did not recommend a conditional use permit, I mean, they've gone through obviously. A very expensive and extensive process and. Um you know, I'm I'm confused about that, so I need some clarification.
Mister Morris.
Mister Chairman Commissioners, thank you. The short answer is conditional use permit uh is typically laid out as among the potential uses uh for. Options for a property for use on specific zoning district in our development uh table. So this specific use doesn't really fall conveniently into a category for conditional use permits. Also, a conditional use permit is heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission and they make the determination whether to approve it or not. It does not require city council action. So with those two things combined and the option of what's called the plan development. To allow exceptions from the underlying zoning code, staff felt that this would be best to be heard ultimately by the planning, by the city council. And a good mechanism for that is the PD rec uh option to allow this, when it's not necessarily. Allowed use in that zoning district, but through the PD process, we can allow exceptions, in this case, this this proposed use. As the plan development rezoned and furthermore, it goes to city council for their ultimate decision.
Mister Schmeling, do you have something to add to that? You're on.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman, if I could get the microphone to work. Uh Stuart Schmeling, Development Services Director. I I think Luke hit the nail on the head, there there um was opportunity or several opportunities. Where um we could have reviewed this, um one being the conditional use permit. It could have been an appropriate action. Um however, uh given all the information, once it was submitted to staff. Um we felt that it was more appropriate uh to be rezoned uh through the PD process and we can. And we can also place conditions that are are that are relevant as well uh through that PD process. Uh but more importantly, we felt that it was a decision that was that should be made. Um by the city council as opposed to just reviewing uh by the planning commission. Uh therefore, um Luke hit the nail right on the head in that. Um it was a, it was a significant decision to be made, given all the information provided to us, we felt it was more appropriate to go through the PD rezoning process.
Thank you, Mister Schmeling. Does that answer your question, Mister Nelson?
Somewhat, I guess I need, I guess they they need to be more in detail on what. Um the limitations are again. My concern is not for this tenant to occupy the property. Uh my concern is just like Mister Gray said, you know, uh market shifts and. What are these limitations and how do the limitations, this PD satisfy the um. You know, what the current zoning regulations are such as, you know, outdoor storage or twenty-four hour operation. Um if if it suddenly shifted to. Something else, I mean, could a boat manufacturer move into that facility? If if these guys moved out in ten years and could their, you know, we all know what comes with uh boat manufacturing, there's. You know, a lot of smells and and uh pretty nasty outdoor storage and. So on and so forth, so tho- those are, those are my concerns, what what are the limitations to this PD? And will that hurt the the owner if if he's locked into. Uh this manufacturing zoning and this PD, if the tenant moved out in ten years, you know. Is he going to be hurt? You know, those 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 are my concerns, so I guess I need to know exactly what the limitations are if. Not with the current tenant, but if the current tenant moves out in ten years.
Mister Schmeling.
Mister Nelson, the the PD process allows you to place conditions. Um as part of the plan development that are relative to the to the proposed use. Um one of which definitely could be um e- everything is handled in indoors. Um yes, there uh there could be some concern in the future in the event that another, that this happened to fail or leave. And another um potential industrial use. Um wo- would try to occupy this facility, for example. Um but we would deal with that at at that time, you 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 have the ability to. Um place any condition that you feel is necessary through this PD process that would help mitigate. Um some of the impact, which whatever that may be, whether you're trying to address parking, whether you're trying to address uh hours of operation. Yeah and. Well, that's that's about it, I guess.
So my question is, has staff taken a look at or made any recommendations for conditions?
Um we looked at that and we felt that based on all the information provided. Um e- especially the the fact that they were proposing everything internal. Um we felt that that the those that the operation was um was appropriate. And that um based on the information that you will, the additional information that you as a commission will receive as well as public information. You can place additional conditions on this.
So we can place conditions such as all operations contained indoors, uh noise levels, uh no outdoor storage, that kind of thing. Along with any approval of this PD.
Yes, you can do that.
Mister Nelson, does that answer your question?
Somewhat, um. Are are we prepared to? Make all those conditions today or is this something that we should postpone and and talk about as the commission? Um because this is a significant issue in our community and. You know, I I I kind of feel like. Uh that we should have some more input from staff, unfortunately, I mean, they do a great job, but. Uh a permanent rezon is is a very serious matter on this building. Uh not only for the community, but for uh. You know, for the for the owner as well, I mean, if we limit it to indoor. Operation only and the tenant moves out in ten years, um or one year or three years. And someone else is ready to lease that building, but they can't. Um because of the conditions that we placed on it, I mean. That's that's a lot of responsibility for a Wednesday morning meeting.
Well, you also have to remember, Mister Nelson, that based on the information that you're receiving today, not only from staff, but. Um from the general public, the conditions that you potentially place on this are recommendations to the city council. Who also has the ability to place additional conditions and terms on it if they choose.
I just don't understand why, you know, with the confidence that we have in this this company and what they're going to do. I I just don't, I don't understand why we don't do a conditional use permit and let them. Operate if they fail or move out, then it goes back to the. Uh it runs with the business, not with with the land.
I don't know that there's a a good answer for that procedurally. Um because if they they could have just as well gone through the conditional use permit process. Uh that process would entail, depending on the outcome of the planning commission review and approval or denial. Um that those traditionally get appealed to the city council, um but yeah, they could have, we could have recommended that as well.
I think where Mister Nelson is coming from, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mister Nelson, is your concern is just opening up. Manufacturing through this PD in the center of town in a zoning district that's not really meant for manufacturing. Am I correct or incorrect?
You're exactly correct, the uh. You know, there's there's a lot of feedback from the community about the. You're exactly correct. The, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of feedback from the community about this, about this, uh, and I, hopefully we got some letters on it. We can open it up to that as well, but, you know, I just, it seems like, uh, it seems like this will work, just like Mr. Gray said, and, and new jobs for, for Havasu is great. You know, the opportunity to maybe go from working outdoors in the summer to working indoors, that could be a great opportunity. Uh, you know, I, I think for employment, this is good and I think the idea with the inside manufacturing and the size of this building is all good. But, you know, when it changes hands, you know, I, I just don't, I don't, the only, the only control that we have for our community would, better control would be through a conditional use permit and I, I, I just fail to understand why we would rezon this building permanently.
Well,
I mean, we, we have, we have, we have no control after that. Uh,
Be that as it, be that as it may, this was the application that's put forth to us right now. So we probably have to consider this. I might suggest that during the course of the presentation of the public input and so forth, commissioners might be thinking about, should this go forward, what conditions they wanna place on it? Or whether or not it should go forward. So, but we're here today to consider the, the, uh, planned development, the zone change rather than a CUP.
Well, I just wanna make, make it clear that I'm not, I'm not opposed to this business or I'm not opposed to, you know, anything anybody has, has said, but I, I don't, I don't agree with the permanent rezon at all.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh, questions of the applicant by commissioners? Anybody?
Uh,
Mr. Levine.
A question, yeah. Obviously, I'm, I'm the new guy here. Um, and so there's, uh, I, I don't understand everything about the, the different, uh, mechanisms that, uh, uh, we're considering here. I, I, you know, Chad, it makes sense, uh, to me. Um, but what I'm wondering is if we did the, the PD route, is this something where, you know, in that scenario 10 years from now, let's say this business is moving out, is this something that the zoning commission could get together and revert? If we felt it's necessary at that time?
So your question is, can you make this rezoned conditional to the applicant's use?
Well, I, I, yeah, I mean, that seems ideal, but if, if, let's say that's not an option or we're past that at this point and we're looking at the PD only, could it, could, you know, in the, the unfortunate scenario where this tenant decides to leave years down the road, couldn't we just vote it back if that's, I mean, if there was some argument to vote it back to retail, which is hard to envision. Um, but if that's true, a different buyer couldn't.
Mr. Morris.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, uh, thank you for the question. We're not changing the underlying zoning. Underlying zoning is still Commercial Health District and all the uses that are allowed in that Commercial Health District are allowed. Uh, so let's say this business went away and then someone else wanted to come in. As long as they were meeting the, the other requirements of the planned development, let's say they were a retail store. Retail store is still allowed. We're not changing the zoning to industrial or light industrial. We're keeping the zoning Commercial Health District, but we're allowing this specific use, uh, however it may be conditioned by the planning commission and city council. As long as those conditions are met, they can go on. Let's say, let's say this company left and another light manufacturing company came in and met all those same conditions, the, the, the zoning goes with the property typically. So if someone came in, a new business came in and they were operating the same way this one does, assuming it's approved, then as long as they're meeting all those conditions, they can operate there. Uh, it is also possible to get rid of PDs or abandon portions of PDs or modify them. We've had some that have reverted back in the last few months that were planned developments that went back to other zoning districts. So it is possible to, for this to be removed, the PD conditions to be removed through the same public process to get them removed if someone wanted to come in and operate something that doesn't specifically meet all the details that may be conditioned as part of this planned development.
And that has to come before this commission, this body again.
That's correct. Goes to the same, same process as this one would. So it's, it's not as locked in as it may seem. We're not saying any industrial uses are allowed. We're saying any uses that are allowed as may be conditioned as part of this approval and the underlying zoning district, all those uses are still allowed, which are generally retail, uh, office, medical, those sort of uses are allowed in this, on this property. But there are additional conditions that may be applied to it, depending upon what the commission and city council decide at this point and was, as we, as we move on.
So,
Luke, can we?
Go ahead, Mr. Nelson.
Luke, can, uh, can we refer to the, the use table for the proposed zoning, please? And just that, that'll help answer Sam's questions and maybe, uh, help clarify what the proposed zoning is going to be. Uh, and, and so if they did move out, you know, what, what are we up against? Can you bring up that table?
I do not have that table right in front of me, but I can tell you, again, we're not changing the underlying zoning district. All the uses that are allowed in the Commercial Health District will be allowed. Uh, if I have some time, I can try to call it up and, and put it on the screen, but any uses that are allowed in that, in that corridor between, um, Lake Havasu, on McCulloch Boulevard, between Lake Havasu Avenue up to Smoke Tree, that area generally is re- Commercial Health District. So all those zone, all those uses that are in there right now would be allowed in this property if this rezon goes through. But there may be additional stipulations or conditions that are tacked onto it. So the, the uses, underlying uses aren't changing. The only thing this is doing is allowing this one specific use in addition to the underlying uses that are allowed in this zoning district with conditions that may be applied to it based on the planning commission and city council's actions coming up. So I hope that answers the question. If you do like, I can get that table called up and we can review it if you still want to.
So as an example, if these folks move out, the underlying zoning district, which allows hospital, medical, I mean, this hospital could come along and, and decide they wanted that facility for, uh, South Campus, you know, and add on to it. That still is, is capable. We're not changing the, and I'm just saying this for clarification for the audience.
That's correct.
Does that make sense, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant by any commissioner? Anybody else?
Yeah, uh, sorry.
Mr. Levine.
So with that, with, with, with that general question of mine out of the way, um, the question for the applicant, uh, is, I, it, I thought I heard something, uh, today. You mentioned something about moving the corporate headquarters here. Uh, prior to that, I had just, understanding was that, uh, you'd be moving this, be creating a sort of a satellite, uh, production facility. Uh, but did I hear that correctly, that you would also be bringing your, your corporate headquarters and all those, those jobs and?
Mr. Busnardo.
Yes, that is correct. Now, my, my plans, uh, for this facility, uh, is to move all of our design, prototyping all of our, our property here and make this our corporate headquarters. I live here, I have a home here. I'm, finally have the excuse to, to be here full-time. So yes, that is correct. One hundred percent. Um, and, and, uh, uh, you know, if I, if I may, uh, to address Mr. Nelson's concerns, I thought all those limitations were on me in this application. So I thought it couldn't be rezoned for anything else. And we did have those limitations. So anyhow.
Mr. Nelson.
No, like I said, I think you guys were doing a great job and, and, uh, uh, this is something that is more on the city's end and, and more on our end. Uh, we, we have to think, you know, 30 years from now, um, not only just now or within the next 10 years, but, uh, no, I think you guys are doing everything, you know, the right, right way.
All right. Do we have any other questions of the applicant by commissioners? Anybody at all? Okay, hearing none. Let's proceed to the public input and I believe we have 18. I believe we have 18 emails to read into the record by Madam Secretary. Little bit of audio difficulties?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, we have 20 that I need to read into the record. Correct.
20 emails to read into the record, so please be patient.
Some are short, some are long. This is from Curtis in Rosebelky. We are opposed to the rezoning of the old Kmart building for the business of manufacturing.
Maria, get as close to the microphone as possible, please.
Do I start over? Can you hear me now? Okay, this is Curtis, this is from Curtis in Rosebelky. We are opposed to the rezoning of the old Kmart building for the business of manufacturing. We do not approve the area for such a business and it would be better suited to a different area away from the main part of our city. Ms. Linda Ontiveros, to whom I may concern, as a citizen and taxpayer of Lake Havasu, Arizona, I truly feel it is inappropriate to rezon the area in the former Kmart center to create manufacturing. We have areas zoned for that purpose further away. That would definitely be a better choice. Jobs, yes. Rezoning, no. Jody Orona, I strongly oppose the city rezoning of 1870 McCulloch Boulevard from retail to manufacture. There are plenty of other vacant buildings zoned for manufacturing available for this type of business. From Melvin and Jeanette Kraft. We are the owners of a condo unit at 1806 Swanson Avenue. We oppose the entry of a manufacturing plant in the former Kmart store. This area has been a downtown retail area for many years and should remain, uh, remain so. We feel that a manufacturing plant at that location would decrease the value of our property, create high-density traffic, create noise and pollution. Should property value decrease, the city would receive less property taxes from the, from the four large condo buildings in this area. From Dawn and Pay Peterson, Fay Peterson. We are opposed to the change, the changing and zoning for this location to Commercial and Health District, CH, CHDPD. On July 7th, 2020, we sent you a letter in this regard. I believe that letter was attached to the staff report. We will appreciate it very much if you will review this letter with everyone in attendance at this meeting. Please consider every, everything spelled out in this letter when making your decision regarding the rezoning of this, of the location at 1870 McCulloch Boulevard North. From Brian Price Corn. To whom I may concern, I want the city to know that I am not against industry coming to Lake Havasu City, but I am against the rezoning of the old Kmart building for industry. Industry should be kept to the industrial areas, not downtown. I also have concerns about the parking and traffic to McCulloch and Swanson. It seems to me that these two streets are already crowded for the size of the streets. 200 employees means 200 cars and 200 parking spots. You need, you need to ask yourself a few hard questions. How will this affect all the businesses in the strip mall? How will this affect the library? Will our children and the residents feel safe in this environment of crowded parking and traffic? I am requesting that the city vote no to rezoning of the old Kmart building. From Neil and Margie Fox. We would like to voice our objection to approving a general development plan allowing a use exception for light industrial manufacturing at the previous Kmart location. The downtown Havasu district is home to many unique boutique shops and popular bars and restaurants. The large building could be partitioned off for smaller retail stores, stores to extend the downtown district. The downtown area is an important part of the Havasu experience for both visitors and residents alike. Please do not put a manufacturing plant near the downtown Havasu district. From Kathleen Tippett. I received a letter as property owner in the affected area from the manufacturing company interested in rezoning the former Kmart. I am not certain whether this is a done deal or not, as I am hearing and seeing comments that appear to say it is. If this is currently an open request that has not been, has, has not been decided upon, I respectfully request that the rezoning at 1870 McCulloch Boulevard, formerly Kmart, be denied. This retail area in the heart of Lake Havasu City welcomes residents and visitors as the original planners envisioned and as, and is the main entrance to Main Street, Upper McCulloch, downtown, uptown, your choice of name, which has been the project of revitalization for years and is a major topic for every study commissioned. This is not an appropriate area for manufacturing, no matter how well-intentioned the company and organization stressing the change may be. As a business owner myself, I can understand the property's owner's desire to have an income flow from this property. However, to rezon the property is not the best solution in the long run for the community nor the, uh, the property owners in the vicinity that made their investments dependent on the zoning in the city plan. There are other areas in town zoned for manufacturing, plus industrial park and business park are alternate locations for such zoning. The shops at Lake Havasu has been reclassified to accommodate warehousing, which would be a better fit for manufacturing enterprise. Thank you for the consideration of my requests to deny the change in zoning. From Jody Mitchell. We are writing you today because we strongly oppose the rezoning of the old Kmart building from General Commercial to PUD. As a business owner here in, here since 2001, we take much pride in our beautiful little city and do not feel it is in the best, in the city's best interest to have a manufacturing plant so visible and right across from our beautiful Veterans Park, especially when we already have designated unavailable places for manufacturing in our city. We feel this is, this will set a very unattractive precedent for our beautiful city. You have done so much in signs, parks, storefronts, and redoing streets to beautify Havasu. Please do not defeat the purpose of your beautification that is meant to encourage tourism and life in Lake Havasu City. Thank you for your time and consideration. From Steve Petrangilo. A retail area is not the place to put a manufacturing business. It is retail center and should have, and should have only retail businesses. What a mismatch this would be. Hey, it's great that there are so many potential jobs in this deal, but put them where they belong, not in a retail center. There are so many other appropriate places that it is not necessary for them to be in the middle of town. Aren't we trying to make this entire area pedestrian, shopping and tourist-friendly? Placing a manufacturing business in that retail center is ridiculous. And parking for employees, that wouldn't be any spa- that, there wouldn't be any spaces left for the retail businesses in that center. No to rezoning of that property. To, this is from Julie Ravia. Dear sirs, I feel this is not the correct place for manufacturing business. It is retail center and should remain just that. I am happy that the company wants to put a plant here in town and happy for the potential jobs, but this needs to be in an industrial zoned area that is already zoned for this. There are plenty of this in town. Have them, have them look out by the airport, maybe by Sterilite Building, but certainly not in the middle of town. The center of town is not being hyped by all the powers that be to be, the center of town is now being hyped by all the powers that be to be Main Street and the pedestrian section of the city. Yes, for businesses, but not at this location. No rezoning of that property. Melanie Martin. I am in opposition of this reason for several reasons. One, the reason would set precedence for future requests along our Main Street corridor to be approved. Current citizens should be kept, current zoning should be kept. Two, any type of factory manufacturing belongs in areas of zoning that are currently designated as such in our city and our coun- county. This company needs to do further research and perhaps build it, build to suit it, our industrial park. I can't believe our city representatives are not directing them to do so, considering the money spent to accommodate the needs of such businesses there. Three, I have received numerous phone calls from residents in the condos along Swanson Avenue who are opposed to, who are opposed and feel the zone change is not welcomed as a desirable fu- future to their neighborhood. A business that fits into the current zoning would complement the surrounding use of retail and library patrons. A factory would not. From Debbie Tracy. I am a resident across the street from the above state of property. I am not in favor of having manufacturing in the heart of our city. The ci- the reasons are, one, we already have an industrial area, so build there. Two, why would we allow manufacturing on our so- so-called Main Street? Three, my property value will go down. Four, what happens when this business sells? Now that the zoning has changed, who knows what Smelly Who knows what smelly and noisy manufacturer will be able to occupy the building? Don't open that door for any manufacturing to come on Main Street. Maybe if the, five, maybe if the owners of the Kmart building would have used a local realtor to know what our town needs, we wouldn't be having this discussion. This shouldn't even be going to planning and zoning, let alone to city council. From Barbara Vernangle. It deeply concerns me that the planning commission is blatantly going to rezone this parcel against the wishes of surrounding private residences. There are plenty of industrial parcels in Lake Havasu that would be more suitable. Apparently, sending these mailers at taxpayers' expense was merely nothing more than a bait-and-switch campaign, since your mind was already made up in advance. This is neither fair or ethical. Everything is either about politics or money. Financial gain should never be deciding factor. For once, think about the surrounding neighborhood. May you reap what you sow. Connie Boyce. I am writing to express my concern over the planned application to rezone the Kmart building that is, that is located in the center of town from General Commercial to PUD to allow a manufacturing biotics company to go in. I understand that if the company relocates here, it will create a lot of welcome employment opportunities. That in itself would be great for the city and the potential jobs it would create for the people who live here. However, my objection is to why the particular location? The city has designated areas zoned for manufacturing, so why the need to rezone this area? There are other areas available nearby that are zoned for this type of business. I'm afraid if this goes through, it will set a precedence for, for further manufacturing allowances. Please reconsider letting this happen. Let this particular site remain open for the type of business it was originally zoned for. Brad Lewis. I am writing you in opposition regarding the rezoning of the application referenced. This is not the location for mixed use. In fact, your general plan is incorporating any type of manufacturing in the heart of our beautiful city. The general plan should be changed. This area should be a place of employment for city residents and by rezoning it will not be, and by rezoning it, it will not be light indus, light industrial. Is, uh, I am so sorry, let me, I had to read that again. This is not the location for mixed use. In fact, if, if your general plan is incorporating any type of manufacturing in the heart of our beautiful city, the general plan should be changed. This area should be a place of enjoy, enjoyment for city residents and by rezoning it will not be. Light industrial is a far cry from enjoyment. Please oppose the request for rezone. Kenneth Moyer. Please accept this email as my objection to the proposed change in use to the former Kmart building on McCulloch Boulevard to accommodate light industrial use. My law offices is located across the street from the former Kmart building in the Woods Professional Plaza. The surrounding area is a mixed use of office, retail shops and restaurants and some apartment, apartments, condominiums. This area is not suited for industrial use, whether light or otherwise. In addition, I am concerned that in the event the city approves this request, the requested change in use, it will open the door for other similar requests in the area. For example, what if Albertson's and Goodwill close their doors at their McCulloch Boulevard locations and no other similar tenants are available to locate in those spaces? How would the city justify allowing the change to the former Kmart building and decline to approve similar changes at other locations on McCulloch Boulevard, including the downtown area? There are areas in Lake Havasu that the subject tenant can look and utilize for its intended businesses. The downtown McCulloch Boulevard area should be, should be, should not be one of them. From Debbie King. When McCulloch created Lake Havasu City, he zoned it in, in an area industrial for specific reason and not to be changed by the planning commission for a business coming from California. For that reason, as a homeowner, I am against this project. Brian McGrew. I've been a Havasu resident for nine, nine, four years now and would like to voice my opinion for PMG and the Kmart building and enter a strong vote of no. Please do not allow the zoning. The Kmart building is located in the heart of our shopping and food district and the, and at the start of our parade alley. It would be a huge disservice to the city and all its residents to allow any form of business to occupy that building that is not centered around the public, serving public and open to the public. Additionally, then, the indications of PMG possibly employing up to two hundred fifty at this location within five years will put undue stress on the parking and other facilities nearby. Again, an undue hardship for Havasu solely to support a private facility not open to the public in the middle of our town. I am originally from Riverside Califor, County California, where Corona, California is located, and I've seen of, of the way big business can come into an area and push everything out. I can point to a couple of specific commercial developments in the region that were chased out by light manufacturing and have now become heavy manufacturing, choking out anything within reach. It would be my suggestion to redirect PMG to one of the more industrialized areas in town where it would be less destructive to the community as a whole and where room for growth can be planned. As there is no room for growth in the Kmart complex without forcing other businesses, including our library, out of the park. Thank you. And last, um, from Robert Miles. Number one, why is this meeting not truly public? You asked us to submit questions through email prior to the meeting due to COVID nineteen, and that I understand. But there will be other questions that arise during the present, any presentation by the prospective tenant and the PUD, which will be, will, which will not be able to be asked. Maybe a second P and Z meeting on this subject is warranted since the limitations due to COVID nineteen. Number two, it has come to our attention that the prospective tenant is now in talks with possibly buying, with possibly wanting to buy the entire complex, not just rent the single lot and building. If that happens, they will have the right to, to not renew the leases of the small businesses in the center and will force some of us to close our stores. That would be a terrible thing, since the majority of the nation's economy and more so in Havasu is built on small businesses. It would also be the ter, it would also be terrible since most of small businesses owners have invested their lives in, in their stores and can do, and cannot do anything else. I myself graduated high school here, graduated college from here at MCC and have decided to stay here and open my own business. If I close my business, I will have to move and look for, for work doing something else. So you might want to look into the issue of them possibly buying the entire center before you make up your mind. And don't just take their word if they say they have no plans to renew leases. This, this right here is the perfect reason why a manufacturing plant should not be in the center of town where retail is the zoning. There are other pieces of property in town that are zoned for this, that have vacant land. How about the city and our PUD help them in obtaining one of those lots for this company to use for its business? Number four, it is also known that man, with, that manufacturing does not create, does not create the type and amount of traffic that retail stores need for their businesses. Which means to offset that, we, the business owners, are going to need to spend more money than usual for advertising and will need to, need more bigger, need more and bigger signage. If this goes through, the, is P and Z planning to allow for a bigger signage for the business in the center? Number five, if this goes through, this will set a precedence. Is P and Z prepared to allow more manufacturing in the middle of town that is zoned retail? And six, if this goes through, is P and Z just becoming a rubber stamp for big business? And that was it.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, we have heard from the public via email. I didn't really hear one positive comment there, but we are at the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends the planning commission recommend approval of Land Use Action twenty dash twenty-four fifty-five for a planned development rezone of tract twenty-three forty-five, block one, lot one from CCHD to CCHDPD approving a general development plan allowing a use exception for light industrial manufacturing in the previous Kmart location. And again, as a reminder, this item is scheduled to go, be heard by the city council at their August twenty-fifth meeting at this point. Thank you.
Okay Commissioners, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Open it up to you guys. What say you? Anybody?
Jim, I have something to say. This is Luke Still.
Mr. Still.
Um, first I'd like to address some of the concerns that were brought up on the front end of this, whether this should be as CP or PD. It seems to me that we, we created conditions, including a condition that says the PD will run with the existing business and be abandoned automatically if they were to locate or go out of business. We would eliminate some of those concerns. Um, I think some of the other conditions we need to consider are the promise of no outdoor storage or outdoor manufacturing activities. Um, and the designated parking area, I think, is something we should consider. Maybe it's a pro-ratic. Share of the overall, uh, space is allocated just to employees, so there is enough space for the other businesses that reside there. Um, and listening to the concerns, it seems like one of the most common ones, just flat out, it's not a manufacturing area, downtown areas aren't good for manufacturing, et cetera, and I don't disagree with that. But when I look at the, the characteristics of this business itself, it doesn't take on the characteristics of what we think of typical manufacturing. It does not, uh, have excessive noise. It, it doesn't have excessive odors. It's one hundred percent indoors by all appearances. I think it's very similar to what is happening across other retail malls in the center of towns, which is repurposing into indoor storage. That's a very common theme right now. I mean, Mr. Gray's point in his presentation, the amount of retail space is shifting and I don't see it going back in the other direction anytime soon, but if it did, it's very easy to abandon the PD. Like I said, it could even be conditioned upon the business staying in place. I don't have a concern over making room for retail in the future if that's what is demanded. But for now, I do think it's going to be very hard to find a big box retailer that's going to come into Lake Havasu. We've tried very difficult hard. Um, when I say we, I mean a collective group of people in Lake Havasu. Since the mall was conceived, have tried to bring big box retail here and it just, you don't see very much of, um, you don't see hardly any new construction of, of space or spec, because it hasn't been feasible with the exception of storage. Um, there's a few office buildings and there's certainly a demand for light industrial and manufacturing, but some of the objections where it should go in those areas where there's space available and there's just flat out not space available. I think James Gray quoted fifty thousand square feet altogether on the market between five or six properties. And this is a hundred thousand square feet that they're looking to occupy, so, um, i- it would be difficult, I think, immediately to find space like this. I mean, one of the considerations may be, is this a temporary approval for a PD so it gives them time to build a suit somewhere? I, I personally, I'll just end with this, I personally think that we need to find ways that are appropriate to not devalue properties around it, to repurpose some of the space that is vacant, because it's not going to get better from a standpoint detail. Lake Havasu is almost built out. We only have about ten percent of our land that's still vacant and unimproved. Um, a small portion of that is going for light industrial or for manufacturing. So it does create some obstacles in terms of bringing businesses in. We've always seen this complication as the chicken or the egg type of argument. And I personally would like to see this business relocate. I appreciate what they're doing. I think it's critical to our base economy to have some type of employment. Um, you know, the counterargument to affordable housing is higher hiring, uh, to get workforce, workforce, you know, into housing that, that is appropriate. So we, we have a lot of issues here, there, and I, and I don't think it's inappropriate to object to manufacturing downtown. I don't feel like this takes on the characteristic of manufacturing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Still. I have a question of staff. Is not the dental facility on Wings Loop in upper, on Upper McCulloch, is that not a manufacturing facility?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I believe, yes, they, they do create or manufacture dental, dental equipment or dent, or dentures or teeth or something in there. Yes. It is a manufacturing, it's quiet and, and we've had no complaints or reports of any issues.
Mr. Schmeling.
Yes, uh, the short answer to that is yes, it is a manufacturing operation and it is located um, in, in a nearby location, different zoning district. However, um, it was done under a different code and it was allowed um, via a zoning administrator's interpretation of the existing code at the time, not based on the current code.
So it's a legal non-conforming?
It is legal non-conforming, correct.
Okay. All right, any other comments from Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Still.
I just had a comment, um,
Mr. Nelson.
Parking. Um, I like the parking concept that they had. Um, however, I don't really want to lock in, or my recommendation anyway is not to lock in any parking, because, um, you know, let's say someone from the check cash-in place there, they feel that customer parking is, is important, so they, you know, if they're employee or manager, they feel like they want to park far away. Um, so their customers can have parking, you know, right in front of the store. Or let's say that, you know, the London Bridge Parade, uh, people park in that, in that parking in common, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's a good idea to restrict certain parking spaces to that business, because, you know, uh, I, I wouldn't want to create any conflict, uh, if someone from the check cash-in place parks, you know, parks in a spot that, that spot that's considered to be one of their parking spaces, uh, in kind of, you know, parking in common issues like this come up in the past. And I think that could be a little bit of a mistake, but uh, I agree with a lot of things that Mr. Still said. It's a, it's a sad, unfortunate, you know, thing that's going on right now with these big box businesses and I feel that, uh, the owner of the building, um, looks like he was pretty aggressive and tried to satisfy all of the community's issues in being willing to, uh, you know, segment the building and, and separate it to attract some smaller businesses. Uh, but that ultimately failed. I think if, if we can create the right conditions on this property, and the only sad thing for the community is that, you know, this building will not be for community enjoyment anymore. It won't be a place to go walk downtown and, and walk in and do some retail shopping, you know. That's a, a really, you know, sad part of this, this whole process. But, uh, I, I appreciate all of the public's comments and Mr. Still's comments and would love to hear some more from the, the other Commissioners as well.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anybody else? Any other?
Mr. Chairman, I, oh.
Mr. Levine.
Oh. Uh, yeah, I would just, um, I, I don't want to sound like a broken record here, but, um, the, the more I think about this, it, it just seems like there's so many positive components here, community. Uh, I hear that there are some people that are, you know, resistant to the change in general. Um, but when we look at things like the value of these jobs here, I mean, we've addressed the impact, the epidemic on in-person retail, which was a dying art anyway. Um, but COVID nineteen seems to really be the last thing in that, but.
Mr. Levine, you're going to have to speak up a little bit, please.
Um, also, the, I, I would overlook the fact that this city has so many people who in, uh, you know, in entertain, in entertaining the vacationers here. Uh, that's another industry that we're seeing some permanent change to. Obviously, it's going to recover here to some degree, um, but, sorry. Um, it seems to me that, uh, it would be, it would be unwashed, overlooked the impact that the, that COVID nineteen is also having on the, what seems to be the news. Those are jobs that aren't going to exist anymore to some degree. So the value of the job that this manufacturing represents to this town seems to outweigh, uh, any, any disadvantage that I can see. Does hear and understand that? Can you guys hear me now? I guess, it appears you guys can't, can't hear me.
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, so that, that was my main point, was just that, uh, in addition to the impact that the, uh, that the outbreak has had on retail, uh, it has an unfortunate impact on vacationers, which has got to be hurt in this town. There's got to be a lot of people who normally serve vacationers here that are hurting. Uh, and I'm sure that if they knew that there was a hundred-plus jobs on the table, they would be very vocal, uh, about the importance of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other Commissioners wish to, uh, speak on this issue?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gordon.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I certainly understand the concerns as well. Um, I, I am in support of this. I think that, I don't think any of us understand. I think that, I don't think any of us understand the shift and dynamic change that's going to happen in the world here in the years ahead. And, I mean, with retail already struggling and the ways that everything from retail to commercial, to restaurant, to bar, there's just going to be such a change that I don't think any of us really know or see where that's going to go. But certainly injecting jobs into the community is ultra vital to the future of Lake Havasu City. And bringing life to the core part of McCulloch is vital. It's vital to the existing, it's vital to the library there. It's vital to the other businesses, retail, office space, shop in the same complex. So, you know, I think at the end of the day, the main thing I would like to see is that it, the storefront look maintains, so it still fits and looks, you know, like it's part of the commercial retail lifestyle of that part of town. But, you know, I think we have to be open to some change and to some different direction here. And I'm definitely in support of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gordon. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, then I'll go ahead and weigh in with my comments. I agree also that the dynamics of retail are changing. And I am glad that I do not own that building at this point with, with the future that it, it has. However, this, this is probably a way to help out that property owner and help the community with regards to manufacturing positions that would be covertly housed in that particular location. I do believe strongly that we do need to restrict the zoning such that, and I've heard, I'll just tick off some of the things that I've heard here in the discussions, maintain the storefront look, put conditions on it like no designated or restricted parking areas. The zoning is to run with the business. It can be, it would be void after that business leaves. All operations must be contained indoors. There'd be noise restrictions, no outdoor storage, no fumes or emissions from the, from the operation. I think if you put something like that on there, those kind of restrictions, it's going to be a success story. So that's, that's my input. Anybody else? We are at the table for a motion and/or continued discussion.
One, one more, like, like Luke said, and, and like you just said, I think if we, I, I feel it's our responsibility and I think we're, we're putting that on our shoulders that if this does occur, that it would be abandoned, like Luke said, after, if this business fails, leaves, or, or whatever. How do we do that, Luke? Luke Morris.
Mr. Morris. Well, typically, zoning, a rezone goes with the property. I may have to ask the city attorney on this one, but I don't think we typically tie it to a specific property owner or user of the property. The intent here is to allow this use with specific conditions is what it sounds like. And so regardless of who owns the property or owns the business or what business operates there, it would seem to me that if the, a new business came in, operated exactly the same way, then there would be no need to change the zoning or the, the conditions of the approval. If someone came in and they want to operate differently, then it'd be up to them to come in and make any amendments or changes to whatever is approved here ultimately. And that would still go with the property. So that's the way it's typically done. Typically, the zoning goes with the property, not the, not the property owner or the use on the property necessarily.
However, and I'm going to direct this to Ms. Gary, our attorney, it is not uncommon to place deed restrictions that run with the property. Not the same application, but I don't see why it couldn't be done such that once this operation ceases, that zoning could revert back to the original zoning. Your input, please.
I'm sorry, these microphones. Obviously, it's something that we haven't done before and haven't researched. I don't know if there are any legal ramifications for doing that or not doing that. I'm trying, like Luke, to understand what it is that we're trying to protect. I mean, the whole point of going through the PD is that it is specific. So if somebody else wanted to come in and operate that exact same way, they would have to do everything that we're talking about today. And if they wanted to do something different, well, they're either going to have to come in and amend the PD or get rid of the PD designation. So I don't know if it's, I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish just by making the PD automatically go away.
If somebody were, I'm sorry.
Can I interject on that, Jim?
Go ahead.
So, Gary, I think, I think the problem is that, you know, through this process, we, as a commission, are being relied on to put on the conditions. Because if we rezoned this, then the rezoning is permanent. I mean, that's exactly what I thought Luke was going to say, but I just wanted to make sure. So if, if we're here, you know, kind of passing by our ideas on what the conditions need to be in this meeting, that's difficult. So I think we probably need to go to refer to the, to the chart on what, what exactly a business, if, if this business failed, can we review that chart? Luke, have, have you pulled it up yet?
Yes, I do have it available to look at if you'd like to.
I think that's what we need to do.
They can, if they can share my screen here.
Can, can I add in a statement?
Mr. Schmeling has something to say.
This is Stuart Schmeling again, Development Services Director. While you guys were discussing this, debating it, I read the planned development code section. And it does allow the commission and the council to place deed restrictions on, on, as part of a PD. However, as Kelly indicated, that we haven't done that in the past. But also, we have to be careful because of rezoning. We can't just make it go away or disappear. It, it has to go through its due process. So at, at the point that this were to, to fail or leave, we, we could initiate a process to rezone the property back to whatever we choose at that time, whatever is appropriate. But we couldn't just make it revert back. Now, I know that it's, it gets a little technical, but there's, there's also contract zoning, which, which is out there, which by state law, we can't do. Get very technical reading those definitions and we want to avoid that or stay away from that. But a deed restriction by our current development code is, is an appropriate restriction that, that the planning commission and the council could require the applicant to, to do as part of this approval.
I'm reaching here. Help me out. What type of deed restriction would we do? Limited to that particular type of business? It's kind of open-ended.
Right, I would imagine so. The code just says that a deed restriction is, is something that you can place on a property as part of a, as part of a planned development. That's all it really says.
And the one thing that we have to keep in mind is, this is a tenant. It's not the owner of the property that's applying for this. I mean, the owner's on board, but would he be on board with a deed restriction on his property?
I don't know.
Mr. Nelson, Mr. Still, anything to chime in?
I thought Stu was looking at you for the deed restriction, because you brought it up. But I, I, you know, my, my thought process, and I know staff might disagree with me and everybody might disagree with me, but I think this is a conditional use permit issue. And I think it needs to go back to the drawing board, unless we can pull up that table and go through it line by line and, and make sure that we're making the right decision.
Chad, are you, are you, I mean, if we rezoned this on a PD, are you thinking that we're going to rezonate manufacturing? Is that why you're asking?
Well, this is a, this is a public format, Luke. So I think unless it's crystal clear to the public and they, they go back and look at our records, I think they need to see that we've reviewed every use that, that's being proposed.
I'm going to take this question back to Luke Morris, if it's okay. But is, what, what, you're going to pull it up and show us? So my question is, to Chad's point, are we allowing additional uses besides the very specific one that we can limit through a PD?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, if I may.
Mr. Morris.
Okay, this request, again, maybe I'm not making myself clear. We're not changing the base underlying zoning district. The commercial health district remains. We're asking, in addition to the uses that are allowed right now under the commercial health district, this PD is asking for one additional use. So, I mean, on, I'm not sure if this is available to be seen with by everyone. Here's the permitted, permitted uses table. Under the C, C H D column here, it's Commercial Health District. It has, along residential uses, just one for multiple family. And that's only for hospital employees who need to place to stay, basically. It's not real traditional residential. The rest of them are going down this column, like continuing care, residential care facilities, clubs, I mean, general retail, public and institutional, retail sales, lodging, things like that, those categories. None of these uses under here are changing. They're all still allowed under that, this proposed PD.
What is the additional allowance?
The additional allowance is for this specific use, for this light industrial use, conditioned as the planning commission and city council may want to place conditions on it. That would be the additional allowed use. It's not changing any of the other underlying allowed uses. It's not.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Gordon.
Miss, Luke, I'm, from what I'm hearing, it seems like we're accomplishing what Chad's recommending. I mean, we're in essence placing a conditional use or an additional use, not a conditional use, but an additional use, which is pretty conditional to what they're trying to do by doing it through a PD. We're allowing light industrial with some conditions, which to me is very similar to the specific, to what a specific conditional use would look like. Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Schmeling.
It is similar. However, although we do respect your opinion, Mr. Nelson, Commissioner Member Nelson, with the information that was provided by, to staff, we determined that the most appropriate application to be submitted was a rezone, a PD rezone. And the way that this is going to occur is that we're going to move forward with this application as submitted by the, by the individual, react to it, whether it's positive or negative. It's going to go on to city council and they're going to react to it, whether it's positive or negative. And then at the, at the result of that, as you pointed out, the applicant, depending on whether they're happy or not happy with the results of that, will have other options available to them, such as the conditional use permit if they choose to go through that application. However, at this point, I just, we just can't switch processes just in, in the middle of it. They have the right to have this application go forward, whether you recommend approval or denial, and as well as council.
Yeah, that's not what we're here for today.
Yeah, and I would just, I, I feel like, I feel like we're accomplishing what we're, you know, Mr. Nelson, I don't know, it seems like we're accomplishing that. Yes, we're allowing light industrial into the mix. But when we talk about all the restrictions and the indoor use and, you know, if we do things like maintaining the retail storefront and shared parking and some of these other things, it would be hard for most other light industrial uses to ever just slide right in and comply.
Okay, well, let's, let's.
My, my opinion on it.
Let's look at the table and let's look at the, you know, Luke's going down all the, the, the things that are permitted in that district. Let's look at the line item.
Nothing's, nothing's, nothing's changing. We're, we're staying in the same underlying zoning district.
I think what Mr. Nelson wants is to look at what additional things could be done in that zoning district with this PD.
Then we have a code attached to it. So what is the, what is the code? So scroll down to what, what, what you're proposing that we add, Luke, and, and Stu. And then let's look at the code and see what it says.
Well, on the third page of the table for permitted uses, here's the column for Commercial Health District. When I go down to Light Industry, it's blank. That means Light Industry is not among the allowed uses in this, in the zoning district.
Correct, I understand that. But there's no code attached to it either. So basically, in this meeting, we, we're going to create the conditions.
That's correct.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes, you can certainly place conditions on this planned development. And those will go on the city council and they can place other addition, additional conditions or revised conditions, yes.
So basically, what you're saying is, there's no list of light industry businesses. We're just adding Light Industry. And we're going to put conditions on what types through this, you know, mainstay, maintain storefront, all operations inside, et cetera, the list of things that the commission decides to put on it.
That's correct.
Because that's, that's the issue, Jim, is, is, that's kind of what I wanted to point out. As you go to Light Industry and there's, there's no guidelines.
That's, that's, that's why the onus.
We're making it up at this meeting.
That's right. That's why the onus becomes, or is on the commission to confine the business to those restrictions.
Yeah, and I don't think it's right to just pass it on to city council because they, they rely on us for this information to, to review our meeting to help make their decision.
Any other discussion by commissioners? Okay, we're at the table for further discussion and/or a motion with restrictions or not, approval or not, whatever.
Jim, this is Luke Still, I'd like to make a motion.
Luke, Mr. Still, go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion to, and again, before I make the motion, I'm just going to say that, to me, we are making recommendations right now to city council. And there is a month for city council to get additional input, to break out some of the verbiage that I'm about ready to throw out. And they consider that. Hopefully, they can use that to come up with the best solution. But what I am recommending is that we approve the PD with restrictions that would include the following. Number one, the PD would run with the existing business, whether that requires a deed restriction or whether that can be done through verbiage that just simply says that if the business goes out of business or changes locations, the business, the property owner is giving the city the right to take that back through the abandonment of that PD in the future by accepting this, these conditions. Number two, there would be no outdoor storage. Number three, there would be no outdoor activities related to manufacturing. Number four, there would be no ominous odor created from any activities within the building. Number four, or number five, that the building would maintain the existing storefront. And that, those are the conditions that I would like to recommend to the city council through part of this approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Still. Do we have a second?
A second.
And who was that?
Sam Levin.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Levin to approve ID 202455 with, as I understand it, the restrictions to, and these may not be in order, maintain the storefront look to all operations contained inside. And I'm paraphrasing again, no outdoor storage, no fumes or emissions, and that the... and that the, the PD should run with the business through some sort of deed restriction and at the end of that business, the city would have the ability to, or the option to rezone back or remove the PD. I know it was a paraphrase, but kind of gets the idea. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none? Let's call for the question. Madam Secretary, roll call, vote. We can't hear you.
Jim Harris?
Yes.
Luke Still?
Yes.
Michael Gordon?
Yes.
Doug Hardy?
Yes.
Chad Nelson?
No.
Matthew Mitchell?
Yes.
Sam Levine?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, congratulations and good luck with city council. That concludes our hearing business. At this point, we would do call to the public, but since we are doing a virtual meeting, there, I don't believe, is any. So future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you. The meeting schedule for August 5th has been canceled. We have no items. The next regular scheduled meeting is for August 19th. At this point, we don't have any items, but we'll let you know if we end up having to cancel that, my item or not, that meeting or not. At this point, the next scheduled meeting will be August 19th unless it gets canceled. Thank you.
With that, that concludes our business. I want to take the opportunity to thank everybody for their patience doing virtual meetings like this, everybody who participated and the public that watches this after the fact. Thank you for your patience and we stand adjourned.